Move right to conduct of business. We're going to go to item B first, asking to adopt resolutions approving the San Bruno Community Foundation's grant policy, approving amendments to the San Bruno Community Foundation 2015-16 budget, approving restated articles of incorporation, and appointing three board members for four-year terms. And I understand we have a couple of different presenters.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. This item represents the next important step in the foundation's ongoing effort to deploy the $70 million restitution fund in the community of San Bruno. So as you've indicated, there are four action items before you this evening, and then one additional item for discussion and direction. And in front of you, you have a detailed staff report, both from Connie and myself, and then also we've included the complete staff reports from the San Bruno Community Foundation on each and every one of these items. So let's just take a minute and do a brief summary of the four action items that are in front of you tonight. And those four action items are the revised budget, the revised articles of incorporation, the appointment of three directors, and approval of the grant-making policy. And we're going to take those in that order. The director of the community foundation, Leslie Hadamia, is here, and we'll ask her to come up in just a couple of minutes to make some additional comments on that last of four items, the grant-making policy. But in any event, what we recommend for this evening is that you take the staff report on those four items, hear from Leslie Hadamia, take public comment, if there is any, and then consider those four resolutions for action. And then after that's over, take up the last item, which is the discussion and direction of the near-term project concepts. So we'll walk you through that as we go along. Let's first start with why the city council is being asked to adopt resolutions on the first four items. And the reason is, you'll recall, that those are all part of the reserved powers of the city council. And those reserved powers are in the bylaws that you adopted for the foundation. And those reserved powers say that you have the authority to approve their budget, to approve amendments to the articles of incorporation, if that makes sense, because you're the one that incorporated, the community foundation, to appoint the directors, again, you've done that before, and to approve the grant-making policy. So let's go through those individually very briefly. On the budget, the first change is the addition of $1 million in proposed grants for 2016. And that's a very exciting opportunity, which we're going to discuss a little bit later. On the articles of incorporation, the main change is clarifying that the foundation will be legally authorized to provide grants to other community nonprofits. And that's a technical change that we explained for you in the staff report. The third item is to appoint three directors. And as a reminder, the city council appointed four directors for four-year terms and three directors for two-year terms. So those two-year terms are up, and the city council must now consider appointing three directors. The current directors are active and serve on several important board committees, and as I've indicated in the staff report, all of them have indicated a willingness to continue serving the San Bruno community and the San Bruno Community Foundation. So the last item for your formal approval and resolution is the grant-making policy. And let's talk about that for just a minute. So first of all, this is a broad policy. This is not something that approves specific grants to specific organizations, and I think you've seen that if you've read the policy. And so there are three categories of things that the foundation has identified that they're interested in funding. The first one is called strategic grant-making, and that's something in which the foundation identifies a community need. For example, they maybe identified a community need as a result of the community listening campaign that you're aware of. And then after having identified that need, they partner with some other community organizations, could be nonprofits, could be for-profit businesses, could be the city, for example, to build a new facility, let's just say. So obviously, if there's a new facility that's proposed or remodeling of an existing facility that belongs to the city, the city council would have to say, yes, we're interested in having that facility, having the funds for that facility to be either remodeled or rebuilt. And the foundation conversely is not interested in proposing funding for a project the city council isn't interested in. So that's the first category of grants that the foundation is interested in making. The second category is called responsive grant-making. And so that's where a community group, let's say, the 4-H, the Rotary Club, Lions, AYSO, the sports groups, could apply to the foundation on forms and with applications that are yet to be approved by the foundation. And then the foundation would decide whether to issue grants to those organizations, and if so, how much. So they're going to be in the process of establishing that, how that all works. But that's the second category or bucket of programs that the foundation is interested in doing. And then the third is something that is referred to as foundation programs. So those are programs that the foundation may wish to simply initiate and fund themselves. And one example of that, which we're going to discuss a little bit later, is the community foundation's interest in establishing a memorial scholarship program for the residents of San Bruno, high school students to go to college in memory of the victims of the PG&E disaster. So with that backdrop on the grant-making policy, I'd like to ask Leslie to come up in just for a few minutes, make a few additional comments about what that grant-making policy is, and what it does, and how it's going to be implemented if approved tonight.
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity to come before the city council today on behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation. And with me here tonight is our president Nancy Kraus and one of our board members, Frank Headley. We are very excited to present to the council the foundation's program strategy framework, otherwise known as our grant-making policy, which marks a significant milestone in the foundation's planning process. And to just give you a little bit of background, in July, at the conclusion of our community listening campaign, through which we heard from more than 1,000 San Bruno community members, the foundation created an ad hoc committee on program strategy development consisting of Chair Nancy Kraus and committee members Frank Headley and Dr. Regina Stanback Stroud, and charged this committee with developing the foundation's overarching program strategy framework. The committee met several times to develop this policy document before you tonight. At our August board meeting, Committee Chair Kraus reported on the committee's deliberations, provided highlights of the developing framework, and received feedback from both the board and the community. The committee considered this feedback as it prepared its final draft, which was approved by the foundation board on October 7. The program strategy framework provides the structure and outline of the foundation's charitable programs and will serve as the guiding document for accomplishing the foundation's mission. The framework is meant to be a flexible, high-level document that clearly articulates the foundation's programmatic intentions and provides direction as the foundation develops specific programs to carry out those intentions. The document, if you've looked through it, includes the foundation's purpose, vision, and mission statements as the driving forces behind what the foundation does and how it operates, as well as eight guiding principles that guide the foundation's operations, activities, and programs. These precepts reflect the values most important to the foundation and the foundation's unique role in the San Bruno community. The funding criteria section describes what and who the foundation may fund through its programs. It defines three main types of support the foundation will provide, activities the foundation will not fund, eligible funding recipients, and program focus areas that were derived from a combination of what the foundation heard during this spring's community listening campaign, San Bruno demographics, and the 10 key components of healthy, equitable communities in San Mateo County, which was compiled by the San Mateo County Health System. As the city attorney highlighted, there are three buckets, as we call them, in our program strategy, which is the final section of the document. As he said, there's strategic grant-making, where we proactively go out and identify a community need, find those groups that can help us achieve those needs, and look for a specific outcome that we hope to achieve. The second bucket is responsive grant-making, which will allow community groups to apply for foundation funding. We would respond to those applications and fund them accordingly. And the final category are foundation-run programs. As the city attorney mentioned, these would be programs that the foundation itself would run outside of grant-making. The first one that we have teed up would be a scholarship program that we'll speak about in a few minutes, but there could be other programs, such as awards programs or things like that, that would be easy for a small staff foundation to run. As an overarching policy document, the program strategy framework does not include the nuts and bolts of any specific program. Such specifics will be spelled out in operating policies for particular programs that the board decides to establish. I am very excited about this document, as is the entire board, which this document, we believe, will allow the foundation to launch into its next phase and actually begin implementing the vision you set out for it in its effort to benefit the San Bruno community.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we'd like to pause and see if there are any questions from the council for either staff or Leslie, and then if not, to take some public comment, and then after that's over, to go through each of the resolutions in turn and take action on those.
Good. Any questions? Ken?
I had the opportunity to stop by in the study session last week, and I came in the middle of Leslie's presentation on the, I believe, the major part of the grant participation, and then heard some comments from, you know, those that were in attendance. What was the general, in your opinion, what was the general response to, say, the responsive grant-making and the, you know, the programs? Because really, the meat of the presentation was the strategic grant-making.
Right. So the program strategy framework actually came before the foundation board at our October board meeting and was approved at that time. And there was support across the board for the overall framework that we presented and for the different components as well, and the three strategy approaches. The study session you're referring to at our last board meeting last week was really an examination of the lifespan of the foundation and how much of the funds we wanted, we want to spend immediately or in the short term on some of these larger capital projects, and what portion of the restitution funds we might want to set aside in what we would call a quasi-endowment, where that part of the funds would be invested with a long-term investment strategy, and the investment income would be used to fund operations and programs. So that was the discussion you walked into last week.
So if I could, the second bucket, which is the responsive grant-making, is something that the entire community can possibly really be a part of, because you're talking about organizations and businesses and such. What sort of feedback have you gotten from that, other than people being, groups being very anxious?
I think that's the main, the main feedback, is that people are supportive of using these funds, you know, some portion to invest in our local community organizations and build upon the good work that they're already doing in our community. And so one of the near-term projects that I'll be speaking about in a few minutes is the establishment of that program. And so we've set forth a committee that's looking specifically at what that program would look like and to build the outlines of that in the application process and the review process.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything for Leslie or staff at this time? No? All right. Mark?
So at this point, it might be appropriate to take any public comment, if there is any, on these four items, and then consider the resolutions that are before you.
Fine. Any public comment? Looks like we're going to consider.
So there are four resolutions in front of you, having to do with the budget, the articles of incorporation, the appointment of the directors, and approval of the grant-making policy. One quick note, you'll note that in the resolution for appointment of the directors, I left it blank because it's to your discretion as to who you do want to appoint, the directors that are currently up for appointment are, I have to look it up here again, sorry, are directors, yes, Regina Stanback Stroud, thank you very much, Pat Bohm and Frank Headley, of course.
All right. It's my understanding they all want to continue.
That's our understanding, yes.
Very good. Okay. Any other discussion or action by the council on these? Can we do these all at once?
I think we'd prefer a separate motion on each resolution, if you don't mind.
Okay. The first one is approving the San Bruno Community Foundation's grant policy. Someone like to introduce that to resolution?
I'll introduce that.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Second is approving the amendments to the San Bruno Community Foundation's 2015-16 budget.
I'll introduce that.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
The third is approving the restated articles of incorporation. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And the last and fourth is appointing three board members for the four-year terms.
Since we're taking turns, I'm going to introduce that one.
And just for clarification, that would be to reappoint.
To reappoint the existing board members.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Now we're going to receive a report and provide direction regarding near-term project concepts, but before we do that, I just, I was thinking about this today when I was reading all of this and all last week, too. I just want to congratulate the foundation executive director Leslie and the entire board for your concise and continued diligence and your efforts to bring to the people of San Bruno all that they deserve in this restitution settlement. Because it's important going forward, I would also like to express my wishes, as I did last year, in the interest of continuity, to continue in your current leadership roles. You have done an extraordinary job in working together and are right on the cusp of getting the fruits of this settlement right into the community. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
And now?
All right.
Receive a report.
Moving on to the final item. So as you see from the staff report, the foundation has discussed and developed six separate project concepts. Two of them are foundation-run programs, a memorial scholarship and a community grants fund. Leslie will talk more about those. Those concepts fall into the second and third buckets of the grant-making policy, and those are the buckets that the city council does not have reserved powers to approve. The four projects that fall into the first bucket of strategic grant-making potentially involve and do involve the city as a partner. So I thought we should ask ourselves the question, under what circumstances would the city be involved as a partner in foundation activities? And there are really three that immediately come to mind. The first is if there are projects that are, involve construction on city property. The second is projects that involve city-sponsored programs. And the third are projects that involve a significant commitment of city staff time either to implement or maintain. Next question that you might ask is, what does being a partner mean? And I think for tonight's purposes, what the staff would be interested in getting direction from you about is whether the city council is interested in further exploring the particular project and working cooperatively with the foundation to develop a process, returning to the city council with additional information. That's the direction that we're looking for tonight. We're not looking for direction to approve any of these things, to say yes or no to any of them. Certainly, if you discuss it and decide you don't want to do something, everybody would like to know that tonight. But if you're interested in the project, that's the direction that we're looking for, to do more research and come back and give you more information. And then the final comment I'll make before I ask Leslie to talk about those individual projects is, in the future, it may turn out that the city would like to see one or more of those projects actually developed and implemented in the community. So in that circumstance, there are many alternatives, and one would be, or could be, that the city could take the lead, for example, on design, development, and construction of the project. The city could agree to provide some funding from whatever source it determined. There could be funding from the foundation, there could be potentially funding from other outside donors or sponsors that the foundation solicits. And so all of those things might allow the foundation dollars to go farther than the $70 million that they have. And those are for facilities primarily that the listening campaign and the city council identifies as facilities that they would like to provide for the citizens of San Bruno. So I'll now turn it over to Leslie and have her make some comments about those projects.
Great. Thank you. So the Program Strategy Development Committee was also charged with identifying a small number of near-term projects for the foundation to consider undertaking in the 2015-2016 timeframe. The idea for identifying a short list of near-term projects addresses the board's desire to begin using the restitution funds to benefit the community in 2016. As you know, many of the projects identified during our community listening campaign are large capital projects for community facilities that will take considerable time to research, develop, and execute. In the meantime, both the board and the public have expressed an interest in beginning the foundation's programs in the near future, at least with some smaller projects that can be accomplished in a shorter timeframe. So in August, Committee Chair Kraus reported on the committee's deliberations to the full board, including a preliminary list of project concepts the committee was developing for board consideration. The concepts are for projects that we would be able to realize considerable progress on by the end of 2016 and would be funded out of the corpus of the restitution funds. The committee identified the following criteria for identifying project concepts. Those criteria include high visibility, relatively low cost, responsive to themes heard from the community in our community listening campaign, clear examples of our program strategy, and taking into account geographic considerations in the city. On October 7, the foundation board approved six project concepts to be researched and explored over the next few months. Again, these were just a blessing of the concepts and the ideas that we would explore these, these program and project concepts with the necessary partners, such as the city. This was not to actually approve those and put a dollar amount on those proposals at this time. The idea is that there would be additional research done and that the committee would come back to the board sometime, hopefully in early 2016, with concrete proposals, including budgets, timelines, and guidelines for consideration and approval. So as the city attorney mentioned, there are really two categories of these near-term projects. The first category are programs that the foundation could run itself, and let me just mention the two of them. There are two project concepts that the foundation would develop and administer. The foundation board would have final decision-making authority to create these programs, and these concepts are being explored by a committee consisting of Patricia Bohm and Emily Roberts, both board members. The first is a memorial scholarship. The idea behind this project concept is to create a significant scholarship for post-secondary studies for San Bruno residents, likely high school seniors, in honor of the Crestmore neighborhood. Such a scholarship would, with one of the foundation's first programs, recognize the tragedy that led to the foundation's establishment, as well as reflect the community's desire to support educational opportunities for San Bruno's young adults. The second project concept is a community grants fund, which was mentioned earlier. The idea behind this is to create a responsive grant-making program through which local community groups can apply for foundation grants to support projects they're working on, consistent with the focus areas identified in the foundation's program strategy framework. Such a fund would enable the foundation to leverage work already being done in the community and to invest in already effective community organizations. So those are the two programs that the foundation is looking to set up itself. Then we have the other category, where there are four project concepts, and these would involve partnerships with the city. They would require, they would involve facilities and programs of the city of San Bruno and require a close working relationship with the city. Successful implementation of these projects would require the agreement of the city council and significant support from city staff. In some cases, the city may also serve as a funding partner. We come before you today to seek your agreement in exploring these project concepts with the foundation. So the first of the four is a facility's master plan. The idea is to partner with the city to underwrite the development of a master plan for the city's community facilities. Such a master plan would be undertaken with the assistance of an experienced architectural firm or construction firm, involve meaningful community engagement in the planning process, and result in a long-term blueprint for meeting the city's community facility needs. The master plan would provide meaningful guidance to the city in charting a course for addressing its facility needs. It would also allow the foundation to have guidance in considering which community facility projects it might consider funding. The second project concept before the city is the community day sponsorship. The idea would be to contribute financially to the city's community day in the park in 2016. Such support is consistent with the call for more community events that the foundation heard in the community listening campaign. The third project concept are lighted crosswalks and other pedestrian safety measures. The idea behind this one is to partner with the city to underwrite installation of lighted crosswalks or other pedestrian safety measures at high-traffic locations on San Mateo Avenue in the downtown area and Cherry Avenue in the Bay Hill area. Improving safety through infrastructure improvements was a theme we heard over and over again during our community listening campaign. And the fourth project concept is community park development. The idea would be to partner with the city to develop or improve one or two small city park projects that are in need of immediate attention. Although most capital projects would benefit from the facility's master planning process, there may be some smaller park development projects that could be accomplished in the next year, and such timely attention would greatly benefit the community and get our first capital project off the ground. As mentioned earlier, the foundation board has allocated a total of $1 million for all of the near-term projects. One of the things we have quickly uncovered as we've gone through our planning process is that $70 million, while it sounds like a lot of money, will not come close to addressing all of the community needs the public has asked the foundation to address. For both the near-term and longer-term projects, we will be looking for partnerships to leverage the restitution funds. The most important of these partnerships will be with the city, to both implement and fund the many projects that the public has asked for and that will greatly benefit our community. We see the exploration of these near-term projects as the first step in building a strong and collaborative relationship between the foundation and the city.
Thank you, Leslie. So now, if the city council has any questions of staff or Leslie, we could answer those now, and then the city council could invite public comment on this last item.
Good. Anything for staff or for Leslie at this time? Irene?
Thank you. I'd like to commend you and your board for such a thorough job and very thoughtful, thoughtfully done. I only have one comment on the memorial scholarship. In our staff report, it says that you're likely looking for high school seniors, and I'd like you to consider looking at junior college graduates that are looking to go in to finish their degrees as well, so not to limit it just to high school seniors.
And that is something we have on our radar screen.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Ken?
Future, on the master plan, facilities master plan, I mean, it's very clear what, at least to me, what the community, what facilities the community wants to upgrade or replace. I just don't want a consultant to look at, have a free-for-all with all the facilities in the city and, you know, give us some major boilerplate of the conditions and things. I think we know where to focus, I believe, and if we can just give that consultant that, you know, that direction, then I think we won't have a lot of wasted report. We've seen, I've seen, we've witnessed many master plans that, you know, have gone by the wayside, and so I think this is something that we really want to use as a tool to determine what, you know, what we want to do, you know, as far as a major project.
If I might make some comments about that, I actually would ask the council to consider a slightly different approach than the one that you've just articulated, in particular because through the community listening campaign, as the executive director just indicated, one of the, perhaps should have been anticipated, outcomes is the interest in the list of -- one of the, perhaps should have been anticipated outcomes is the interest in the list of items is much longer than 70 million dollars will produce. Partnerships is one key component of a long-term strategy to address the broader range of community needs and interests. As well, the community listening campaign only really sort of touched the tip of the iceberg in terms of what is the real vision for those facilities that are, that were most often talked about, and those fell into several different categories, a library, a community center, a swimming pool, parks, fields. But there isn't really any detail about what, what is the vision for what those facilities might be, what are the, what components might they have, how might they function, how might they be, how might functional uses be coordinated or consolidated in order to best meet the broadest range of community interests? Beyond that, the city has the opportunity, I think, here, partnering with the foundation and frankly, taking advantage of the opportunity to fund a master plan, to take a comprehensive look at all of the city's facilities, which serve a variety of different purposes, all of them necessary and important to the city's services and to the community's overall health and vitality. Taking a look at those facilities gives us a broader opportunity, taking a look at the facilities on a comprehensive basis, as the executive director indicated, with abundant, robust public participation, and with an eye towards what can be funded potentially in partnership with the community foundation. It gives us the opportunity to look at what needs to be done and how it might be best done. For example, a city hall or a community, a civic center concept might include a different way of looking at how communities, community center and library facilities are provided than we currently have. So, our interest, in my recommendation, would be, again, to take advantage of the partnership funding opportunity, to look at our facilities in a comprehensive manner, not so that the foundation can commit to funding really any or all of them, but to give us the broadest possible opportunity to look at what, how we might beneficially, how the foundation might beneficially deploy those funds consistent with the community listening campaign, and what might we want to strategically think about for the future planning and facility management that is the responsibility of the city? So, my recommendation is that we look at this as a comprehensive plan, not to sit on the shelf, maybe not to be able to be fully implemented, but with the idea that a planning document is, just like in our sewer and water master plans, our infrastructure utility master plans did, it gave us a better tool for evaluating priorities as funding opportunities present themselves and as, as other opportunities for coordination and collaboration with others might present. The last thing I'll say is that, a number of years ago, as, just as an example, we had a quick, but ultimately unsuccessful opportunity to apply for funding for a grant to build a fire station. We scrambled to put together an application, we did the best that we could, but without a complete vision of what that facility might need to operationally provide or look like and be able to, be able to articulate that in a, in a more coherent manner, we ultimately did not fare as well in the, in the grant selection process. So, it's, it's a tool as well for the future potential opportunity for the grant funding or other opportunities that might present themselves.
So, I missed the boat on that one. What I didn't want, what I was more concerned about, is that the public seeing a master plan and seeing all the facilities like a fire station and saying, "I thought we were going to get a new pool, what are we looking at a fire station for?" So, I, the, the opportunity, yes, I totally agree with that. So, I thank the foundation for helping secure that master plan, and then, for whatever other purposes in the future, whether it's going to be a partnership or whether it's something that the city does on their own, you know, to upgrade or replace a facility. Thank you for the explanation.
Any other comments?
To the chair.
Michael?
One concern I had early on when we were setting up the foundation was that the city would bog down the foundation with, in this case, and, I mean, I understand, so it's a wonderful opportunity for the city, and it's something that we've been wanting to do. We need to look at all the facilities and figure out what we need to do with all of them, and someday figure out how we're going to pay for them. And that day is going to be a definite requirement for us, probably sooner rather than later. But when we talk about looking at this, this master plan, I'm wondering if that's not going to somehow delay projects. I mean, because if we were just to focus all the energy on, let's just look at the, let's look at the swimming pool, let's look at the rec center, these are projects that, they're on our radar, it's what the community is saying that they really want, but if we to say, okay, then we're going to take a step back and we're going to look at all facilities, I imagine that that project in itself is going to take a lot longer than if we were very focused on one project and say, here's where we're going to dedicate all our energy and, and charge ahead on that. So, lost opportunity, I mean, if we were to do that, it's clearly a lost opportunity to the city, but that's really why I wanted to have a separation, because up here, we have a different set of goals and, you know, we're, you know, we're burdened with a lot of different things, where I wanted the foundation to be free of those burdens and just be able to really be very focused and very responsive to the immediate needs of the residents, the people that are going to benefit from it immediately. And while everybody would benefit from, say, a new corp yard, definitely everybody would benefit from that, I don't think the public would probably have that at the top of their list.
The foundation will be identifying its own priorities independent of the, of the city, but what comes, you know, the, the community engagement piece of the master planning process, I think, will be critical, even if the foundation, say, you know, identified a library and a pool as, as priorities. That, the, the, the community engagement exercise is an important part of figuring out what those would look like, and the facilities' master plan gives us a vehicle for effectively collecting that data and provide, you know, developing the plans for it. I think what's also will be helpful with the facilities' master plan is, when, when the community talks about a lot of these different facilities, like a rec center, a community center, library, sort of in isolation, the facilities' master planning process can bring those together so that there's not overlap and duplication, and that maybe certain things, when you partner them together, the library that is really more of a community center, has some of the features that maybe people also wanted in the rec center, you can see the duplication and you can figure out what facilities would be most effective for the community and that would make most sense for us to fund going forward. So, I think that process will help that.
If I could just add, if, if the council sees fit to provide direction to move forward in the way that the staff and the foundation are recommending tonight, our next step would be to begin discussion, either through an RFP process or more informally, with people who do this and who have a higher level of expertise in how the planning process itself might be structured in order to meet the objective that you're talking about, to avoid bogging down, to detail everything about the corporation yard and the fire station when really a, a more priority or more timely interest revolves around those potential facility projects that emerged through the listening campaign. I, I, I think we are, we, we believe that a, a planning process can be structured in a way that could potentially resolve some of the concerns that you're talking about. Our first level of effort would be to begin to explore that, but if you're not interested, we need to know that so that we take that off the table.
Thank you.
Okay, Rico?
Yeah, I, I share some of the same concerns that the vice mayor's echoed. To me, if we're going to do, and maybe the right word you are using is take advantage, facilities' master plan is something really the city, the way I look at it, should fund, implement, and structure. Yes, there's mutual benefit to have that information, but I know in the listening campaign, I went to two of the three. I, I didn't hear about the police station, I didn't hear about the skyline activity center that has sat vacant, Kattapalot that's vacant. So, to say we want to look at all the facilities and do this global view, I think it does slow it down. I think there was some clear, concise from the campaign that the board did an exceptional job of reaching out and doing something that the city has not done, that I can remember for a long time, and seeing what their needs and what their wishes are. And it was very concise to me where it was and what they were looking at. And I think that if we're going to do it, let's, let's, let's be efficient and be effective and streamline the process, and I think going to this global approach will bog it down. And, and I get concerned, too, because I'd say, you're bringing back to us what you've heard, and what, to me, I heard at those were certain facilities, not a whole master plan. I understand the integration aspect, so if you were going to talk about a civic center and a library, I can understand looking at that. I remember when I was on Park and Rec Commission, we looked at a swimming pool. So, I think there are things we, you can do in that limelight, but to have the, all the city facilities and analyze all of those and have somebody come up with this vision, that, that concerns me.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? Okay, thank you very much for the report, and thanks for spending your evening with us. It's pretty informative. Like I said, you've come an awful long way.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much. This is great. We'll go right to item A.
Through the chair.
Sorry.
Hold on, sorry. Just wanted to make sure that the council did provide direction on, on those four project concepts, and that direction that the staff is looking for would be to further explore them and come back to you with additional information and taking into consideration the comments that we've heard from several council members that have to do with the facilities and programs that were identified in the community listening campaign, as opposed to facilities that the city might have an interest in master planning but were not necessarily identified in the listening campaign. So, we would certainly understand that and would look for direction to provide, you know, further report back to you on the, on those four concepts.
Okay. Is it safe to say we have a consensus on, on the report?
Yes.
I would, I would just say that I like what the city manager said about, you know, possibly bringing somebody in that can sort of address this in a fashion that's not going to bog us down, that we are going to try to streamline it, so to speak, so that we can meet the interest of time.
Through the chair. I would just like also to, on the lighted sidewalks, crosswalks, I think that's a great idea and things, but being on a, on a county regional, you know, regional committee, I know there are also grant opportunities that could also supplement, you know, that also. So, that, that would be great, and parks, there's probably grant opportunities for parks also, so we can, you know, get resources from, from, from other entities also, but exciting stuff, good vision, and I really look forward to, to working with you more.
And I know this is just, these are concepts, these are not decisions that are being made this evening. The board obviously will do their great work that they are already doing. When we say community day sponsorship, to me, I'm not understanding if that means the whole thing, that means a portion of it and getting other sponsors from the community to leverage that, because I think, obviously, this is, that was a one-time, this last budget has not been brought before the city council for consideration for ongoing, so that I wasn't sure what the goal there.
Well, part of it would be to explore that with the city, but it may mean being the lead sponsor and so that you can leverage our money to find other sponsors as well.
Thanks, thank you, Leslie.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have what you need? Thank you very much. All right, great.